The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
And good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special board meeting to order. We will start with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please?
Good evening, Becker.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Sitnikow.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Vandenhuvel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present. We have one item for discussion tonight, which is a continuation of a topic that we began at our March eighth board meeting. And that is GBFS Forward Secondary Return to Four Days Per Week. For those who may not have seen that meeting, we had this on our agenda of our board meeting beginning of March. During that discussion, I think there was desire by the board to move this to a special meeting later on in the month. So for a few reasons, one, to gather some more information from the administration about the success and challenges that our schools were having with returning to in-person instruction. Along with, I just lost my train of thought. But anyway, we wanted some more time to see our schools in action before continuing the conversation. So since that time Superintendent Merely and his team put together some information, which is attached to board docs. All board members received that information last week. And now the conversation here today is kind of a continuation of that. So certainly we'll have plenty of time for discussion, but I guess I would ask for the sake of discussion, if there are any motions that a board member would like to make for us to use as a talking point. Go ahead, Brenda.
I'd like to move that we eliminate the cohort model at the secondary school level and return those students four days a week back to school and continue the option for virtual learning.
Second.
Okay, Beth, I'm assuming you're going to try to capture that and we'll be able to see it up on the screen in a minute. So we have a motion on the floor. Oh, yep, go ahead, Laura.
Was there a timeline, a date with that?
Yeah, there should have been. Sorry, April 12.
Thank you.
That was, that would have been a big.
So we probably need another second, second.
Okay. All right. So obviously we'll have a lot of discussion about that motion on the floor. I guess first I would just ask Superintendent Merely to just react to that maybe first to ensure from an operations perspective, is that a doable date?
Am I on? All right, thanks. I'll make sure I get that button. All right, last time we struggled with that a little bit. So first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to share information with your response to the inquiries you had at the last meeting. As President Vandenhuvel said, you'll find that information relayed to you from our building administrators attached into separate memos. What I would like to do is just point out and acknowledge the work that the district team has done over the last eight months. Whether it's our instructional staff and support staff in the buildings, facilities, maintenance, food service. They've just done an exceptional job, meeting our students' needs both while they were offsite and once they've returned to our buildings. I know from speaking with them directly that they are all prepared to serve students when they return. And they understand the direction that the board had been leaning in the last couple of meetings. And so they've been ramping up and preparing for that. And they stand ready to serve those students and our staff if there's a decision to return to four days a week. So I think it's just really important that we recognize the work that they've done. As you saw in the memos that were provided to you from our building administrators, there are certainly some opportunities. They talk about engagement with students, social emotional health, some of those other components that we know are connected to students and their connection with staff and their peers. There are certainly some challenges, I think not the least of which is the physical distancing issue. We know that the CDC has come out and talked about three-foot distance as opposed to a six-foot distance. The one thing I do want to make sure that you all understand is that regardless of a three-foot or a six-foot distance as recommended by the CDC, we will not be able to accomplish that if we have all of our students back. You've all been in our buildings, you know, the status that they have in terms of population and space. At the secondary level, when you consider things like common spaces, hallways, cafeterias, libraries, et cetera. We know that we will have many, many children that are passing during passing periods. We will have many children in the cafeteria eating during the lunch shifts. And so we know we won't be able to meet that physical distancing requirement. And I just want to make sure that we share that with you because I don't want that to be a surprise moving forward. At the elementary level, that's been an issue for us since we've had our students back. It's a little less of an issue at the elementary level simply because we don't have the passing time issues that we have with the secondary. And so we're more easily able to keep those students contained in their classroom and control some of that passing time so that they're not interacting with each other in the hallways to the same extent. So definitely some challenges there. Probably the other big one that I draw your attention to is staffing. We are going to be in a better position. You've mentioned that April 12 date. We'll be in a better position on April 12 simply because by that point in time, many of our staff will have received their second vaccination. They'll have been through the two-week post-vaccination period. And so isolating and quarantining when they are asymptomatic will no longer be an issue for us. That should make it much more effective for us in terms of managing our staff. Couple of things to point out that you might have seen in the memo. We will have some challenges in some of our secondary schools, in some of our departments because we've doubled up in some of our sections in order to try to ensure that we have content area teachers teaching children in content area classes. So we have some sections that have collapsed into others in staff on overloads in order to accomplish that. If we bring everybody back to campus, the likelihood is we'll have to again break those classes out. And we may have some challenges finding substitute teachers that are certified in those content areas to fill in in those classes. Not to say that that can't be overcome. We've got a wonderful instructional staff. They're very creative. Given the opportunity, I'm sure that they will work to develop methods that can allow them to share that content with all the students in those content areas. I just wanted to make you aware that that is a challenge that our principals brought up to us.
Okay, thank you for that. So the, those are some of the things that we'll be facing. But the short answer to the question, could we pull off April 12? The answer is yes.
Yes.
Okay, but all those are all the good, good things to consider. All right, with that being said, I'd open it up for discussion to the board. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you. So I have a comment and then I have a few questions for Superintendent Merely. So my comment is I'm 100% on board with making students a priority. And I am encouraged to see that maybe we will do that tonight. I have my questions. Let's see, let me take the first one. My first question is, there are rumors and speculation about eliminating a virtual option. Clearly, the motion doesn't do that, the one that I just seconded. But for the remainder of the school year, I have not seen personally a recommendation for this. And I think it's important to, I guess, get this on record, put it out there right now, that that is not and nor has ever been a recommendation, nor do I support that idea. What is your response to that?
As I understand it, the recommendation that came through and certainly the conversation that we've had here at the board table has always supported the ability for the approximately third of our students right now that are virtual to remain in that environment through the rest of the school year.
Thank you. I'm glad to get that out there. So moving forward for virtual for fall next school year, is there anything you can share with, with us and with the public related to? Are there conversations happening about that model coming forward is, and where are those at and who is involved?
So at this point in time, we anticipate that we're going to be starting the school year next year in our regular five-day onsite model with the regular calendar that you've already adopted, the regular school schedule that our children and families are used to. Right now at the K5 level, we are working to develop a virtual option for students and their parents. So that if they choose to start the next year in virtual, they would have the opportunity to do so. Unlike this year where everyone started virtual and then we had an extensive discussion here at the table about how best to accommodate those students when they come back. They would actually start in all virtual environment. They would have their own classes with their own teachers. And so we wouldn't face the conundrum that we had this year about separating students from their teachers. We don't have that plan in place right now at the secondary level, partly just due to the complexity of our secondary program and how we would go about affording the breadth of classes that are currently offered to our secondary students to those in a virtual environment. Certainly something that we're looking at. We just don't have something like that in place at this time.
Thank you. And so with that, for clarity, the teacher would not be teaching virtually and in person. It would be a different scenario.
That's correct. Virtual teachers would have virtual students, onsite teachers would have onsite students.
And you answered my question about committing to five days next fall. So thank you.
Go ahead, Brenda.
I want, I just want to, you know, obviously every one of these decisions we've made has been fraught with complexity and also the fact of the matter is that every decision we've made causes hardship for some and provides benefit for others. There's been no way to avoid that in any of these decisions. One of the things I just, that I feel like, one of the reasons I made the April 12 recommendation is because of what Superintendent Merely said is that our, our, the staff that have desired have been able to be vaccinated. And by the time we get to that April 12 date, our staff will, will be, should be well protected. The vaccines have been showing to work well, including against the new variants. And so then it, you know, it's up to students to do what they can to physically distance. And then in, in schools, it's, or in classrooms, obviously it's a little easier than it's going to be in the hallways and cafeterias and things like that. I realize this puts some families in hardship because they've put their kids in school knowing it was cohort. And now they're not sure they want their kids in school when all the kids are back. And so it's again, I didn't make this decision lightly and put a lot of thought into it and feel, feel comfortable at this point with it. And I also want to point out as, has already, has already been pointed out that that I want to make sure that the, the work that our staff has put in this year to make this work for our students has been absolutely Herculean. I mean, they've, we've asked them to do so much. We've asked them to change midstream. They've, they've met the expectations for doing that. In many cases, they're far exceeding those expectations. And that's our teachers, our food servers, our transportation now that we've pulled them in. You know, our therapists, physical occupational speech and language therapist. I mean, just everybody has, has pulled together and done everything they needed to, to make whatever model of instruction we were in work. And I, and that's pretty apparent with the list that we got. I mean, you can see that the added challenge to making this work is, 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 is big. But so I just want to put, give a huge thank you to everybody that's been involved with us working many, many, many more hours than they've ever had to work before to make this work. And anyway, just thank you.
Any other discussions? Go ahead, Andrew.
I would add to that, that the COVID data, if you look at the, the state of Wisconsin breaks out by the territory of a school district. That's a, that's a different thing than our school district measuring as though it were its own. What, measuring it as its own population, that's a different statistic with a different purpose. If you look side by side and run the CDC number, Green Bay, after opening partially is doing better than the rest of the county. And that's three, if you look at 322, their one-week adjusted statistic would have been 38.55. That's on a one-week basis, three weeks after opening. And the rest of the county, if you separate it out, was at 69.96 if you break that out as its own. So we're not, we're not seeing the rise. If, if we went to four day and we saw a spike in COVID, we certainly could, or the board at the time could reevaluate as needed. But I'm optimistic by the fact that we, we didn't, we didn't increase, we decreased during the time, during that time. So this is absolutely not a decision I'm making in ignorance of COVID data. It's with full knowledge of the COVID data and that this partial return has not, has not increased the rates. And also, yes, by April 12, staff would be, staff who wish the vaccination. We've, we've offered more than enough slots that every staff wishing to could have had one and, and didn't even fill them all, right? But so I am, I'm comfortable doing this. I am, you know, as other board members certainly are because people are using the board email address, we're getting, we're getting strong opinions on both sides. No one, no one's solution would make 100% of people happy. I do want to echo what Rhonda said. There's, I've heard no serious talk from anyone about wanting to eliminate virtual. Being able to offer virtual for those that need it and want it is, is key here. And if we couldn't, my decision might be different, but we absolutely, we absolutely can. And like I said, we have, as we've revisited before, we have the ability to revisit if, if this doesn't, doesn't go well. But our, our numbers have been good. Our numbers have been, after reopening, well below that CDC 50 where the CDC offers more, more flexibility.
Go ahead, Dawn.
So Steve, we know from our emails that there will be families that if we do this, we will be taking away. There will be families that will lose the in-person option, families that have chosen to send their students in person because we are at half capacity. Can you explain what that process will be for parents to go back to virtual?
So that process will look much like it did the last time we had a modality change. We will have parents work directly with their school administrative and support offices to make those transitions. April 12 is a marking period for us. And so that makes for, if there's going to be a transition, it makes for a smoother onboarding and off-ramping for students who select change at that point in time. But again, this will give our administrative and support staff teams at the building levels about three weeks to work with parents to make sure that they are appropriately situated for their choice for that next marking period.
Go ahead, Laura.
I would like to add to this motion some kind of burden rate, community burden rate. Is it possible to do that? That we can't, that would trigger a meeting?
Yeah, I mean, you can amend, you can amend the motion.
Right now?
Sure.
Then I would like to amend the motion with that if the community burden rate reaches, I'm going to say 400, that will automatically trigger a special board meeting to discuss. Cause, so that would be my amendment, but the reason why I would add that is because I feel like if, if our community is seeing that kind of rise in the numbers.
I just want to make sure that we get a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you wanted to.
No, the second is in order.
A second.
Go ahead.
Our numbers are low right now. And if we see that kind of rise, that means our community is probably in the middle of some kind of a spike, another, another wave. And I'd rather, I'd rather get in and take action at the front end of that than to wait till that number is higher. That's my rationale behind that.
Laura, can I ask, when you say burden rate of 400, we now have a school district burden rate. We have a county burden rate. Andrew mentioned earlier sort of a.
I don't know. I think maybe we should have some discussion about that. I'm not sure which one would be more compelling to our families if it's in the school, that burden rate, or if it's in the community. Probably the school, I would guess.
Steve, you have to weigh in on that.
I just wanted to offer a quick request for clarification as you go through that too. And that's to specify whether we're looking at a seven-day or a 14-day burden rate only because both the CDC, the state and others have used both. And so we'll just want to make sure that we have that clarified.
Again, I don't really know exactly. We've always used the 14 before. Maybe we should stick with that. I'd love to hear what other people have to say.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Laura, I have a question. So you chose 400. Knowing the number of vaccinations that will have been in play, I'm just wondering how you came out with that number and what you've used to determine that number.
I don't have any real criteria for that number other than to say that it's, when we were talking about burden rates before, we were always kind of somewhere between like 300 and 500 or 600 when we were, you know, talking about what would be a trigger point for action or change.
I definitely remember that conversation, but knowing that the community has had and will continue to have access to vaccinations, I'm just wondering if, if that still works for you, that number related to the, the new, the new situation or the new information?
Would you take any consideration in that part? Your, my. A large amount of the people in our community have had COVID and that, that number is growing every day. And a large amount of people in our community are getting vaccinated and that is growing as well. Here's, here's my concern is that the variants, where we don't really, still don't know exactly how those might show up in our community and affect COVID spread. You know, I've been kind of watching those numbers and they're growing significantly every single day. So I just want something in place that would, again, serve as a trigger if, if that started, if those numbers started to rise again. I mean, cause not only are we, not only, I mean, maybe that doesn't happen for the end of the school year, but school is going to go well and I mean, it's going to go all summer and kids are going to be in our schools all summer. And so we can't really look at it as the end of the year and then everything stops. We, we're going to have to think about it all summer long as well. So that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Go ahead, Andrew and then Dawn.
So per consistency, you know, I think everything so far has been two-week and it's been Brown County. So to me, that would be the spot to, that would be the point of reference to use. I can, I can certainly get behind this because if we get, if we get to four, if we get to 400 in the county, that would be a quadrupling of COVID. If we quadruple COVID, there's absolutely, absolutely a problem. Absolutely a problem with that. And it triggers a meeting. It doesn't force an automatic stoppage. As, as Brenda had said, you know, an automatic stoppage could be premature with the, you know, the science of, you know, changing and new information being developed. So I absolutely could get behind a motion that triggers an emergency meeting if we hit 400 on a two-week basis for, for the county and having that, having that continue until, you know, until further notice, I think it's, it's responsible. We've shown at each step as we've gradually reopened, we've, we've had that emergency meeting target. It's, it has dropped as COVID dropped, but ensures if there's an increase, a substantial increase, we do that meeting. If, if I'm still on the board, I would quite possibly ask for, for a meeting before it would even hit that because that would be a big jump, but the auto trigger is good. I think where the school district numbers come into play is if we find that the outlying areas are responsible for it and we've hovered low because I would presume, because we're doing what we need to be doing, then that would be a reason at that emergency meeting to stay the course. And if we're increasing, if everyone, including us, is spiked, then that might be a different, different decision. So I support it.
Just want to mention that, I mean, I don't know if you guys watched over the weekend, like numbers are really spiking in Michigan right now and in New York. And those are the variants showing up. And there's no reason to think that that won't at some point come to Wisconsin and start impacting our numbers. Obviously, I hope that doesn't happen. But at least I think we should think about it and be prepared to, that this might be something we'll have to revisit.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Yeah, no, I agree with Andrew. And then we don't have to change your website. I mean, consistently, we have had on our website, we've been looking at the 14-day Brown County burden. And I think that's what we should do just to keep it consistent. And then we don't need to change your website and people are comfortable with what they're looking at. With, with the number of people that have had COVID and the number of people that are getting vaccinated, I'd be very surprised to see us hit 400, but I think it's smart to have that trigger.
Go ahead, Laura.
Hello, good evening. A couple thoughts. I'm just listening to the discussion and also reading the email that have, have come in and different things on social media and talking to people. One of the, I think being, being new to this, I don't envy the decision you guys had to make this decision in the past. And now here I find myself making a similar decision. But I think, you know, Rhonda had mentioned earlier that, you know, it's, it's good that we're getting back to the right thing for the students in the district. But I think the challenge with that is I think it's what's the right thing is going to be different for every individual family, which is why therein is a problem. My kids are remaining virtual the rest of the year, which is why I'm meeting virtually due to some health concerns. I will be in person once I get my second vaccination. But I think that's part of the challenge is that, you know, there's compelling reasons on both sides. So my concern, well, one of my concerns is, well, question first for a superintendent. You mentioned that some classes, they're going to have to double up. So what is the, what are the student numbers that we're looking at for some of those, for example?
So one of them would be in the memo that came to you, for instance, science at one of our high schools. So we've got a couple of teachers that are out. The staff there just stepped right up. They wanted to make sure that they kept those students and the family, and so they took on overloads, they took some of the class sections and deconstructed those and then fed the students out into other sections with available seats so that they could make sure that those students were able to stay on track from a content standpoint. So that worked really well when we were in the cohort model, because what you'd find is larger in-person classes and larger larger virtual sections for those teachers. However, if we're going to bring everybody back onsite for four days a week, there simply won't be enough room for that teacher to accommodate both the students that they'd have virtually, but then more importantly, those that they would physically have in the classroom. And so they'll have to look at taking those sections back out to what they were originally. And that's where we're struggling to make sure we can find content area specialists that can substitute teach in those areas to ensure that those students get the support they need from now through the end of the calendar year.
Well, then, if you're able to get those that support with the classroom sizes, then if they were back in four days, would they then be able to be a little bit smaller?
Yes, they go back.
Classes.
Sorry about that. Didn't mean to interrupt there. Yeah, they go back to the same size sections they were in before. And then, like I mentioned earlier, our content specialists might have to get a little creative about how they make sure to get the content into those courses that are being taught by substitute teachers.
Okay, um, and then you also did mention that, you know, in the report about the challenges with social distancing in the common areas, of course, cafeteria, communal areas, hallways. So I think I think Laura had also talked about the variance. That was another concern I have is is where what does that mean for us? And also with only having been one week in the cohort model for some of the for some of the students, you know, what how much information do we really have to make that good decision? And then lastly, my concern is for the families who did opt to return, and we addressed that briefly about them coming back and then them having the option to then go virtual. And I just think that that's a lot of change for the students, it's a lot of change for the staff. I appreciate that that they are on standby and willing to accommodate if this is the decision of the board to have them return on the 12th. But I I also wonder, you know, it it seems a little unfair to those parents that we're hearing a lot from people that want four and five days a week, but there are also parents we're hearing from that were happy with the way the cohort model was. And so to me, it just seems like the cohort model is a little bit of everybody kind of middle of the road, so that not everybody is completely happy, but perhaps more people within the district are able to accommodate accommodate that in their families, and that works better for more. So I feel that I wouldn't necessarily want to change that for those families again either. So that's my challenge.
Go ahead, Steve.
And I just wanted to offer, I appreciate that I I was very clear, and people heard that about the physical distancing issues in our common areas. What I don't want people to lose track of is that that physical distancing will be just as pronounced in the classroom. If you return to onsite sections that have 25, 26 kids in them, you've all been in our classrooms, you know what a classroom looks like when it has that many children in it at the middle school or the high school level. So I just do want to make sure that that you also understand that it's not just the common areas, but that we will also not be able to meet those physical distance requirements in many of our classrooms.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Probably not often 25 or 26, though, because there will be a percentage staying staying virtual. We've had I visited, I did visit Preble on the first day, our bit, you know, our largest high school in the cohort model, and it looks like looked to me like if you if you doubled a lot of those classes, they would be maybe 18 in in person. There's also people, you know, absent for plenty of non-COVID related reasons on a given day. The other question I had is couldn't we explore more if we if we're short a science teacher, a science certified sub, the the beaming in idea? Have a have a sub qualified to help work with those kids, but the science expert, you know, being on a maybe on a screen from next door could possibly not saying it has to be quite possibly could rotate between rooms, so there would be some, you know, face to face. I think that's a technology we could maybe use a little a little more. I know they're trying to trying to hire teachers. As luck would have it, from my other job, I just had some kind of chit chat with a customer. We were waiting for something to happen on his computer, and he said, hey, does does Green Bay need a physics? Physics certified teacher? Yes. Unfortunately, this person said, well, I know somebody who might be wrapping up that course of study in one to two years, and I said, well, it's still it's still I would think of being a teacher of a of a science or math area, the demand will not go away in two years, but it doesn't unfortunately, doesn't take one of those slots immediately. But I think that, you know, beaming in certainly could be an answer.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Andrew. I think that if we asked our our teachers to come up with some of those creative ideas, whether it's, as you said, maybe sharing a class, be able to go back and forth, whether it's using our our streaming technology to reach into those courses, I'm confident that they will ensure that those students are able to get the content that they need.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Are we able to provide more? What are they called? The screens, the
Dividers.
Dividers at the high school level for for schools or for classrooms that seem tighter than most?
So we do have, and if you were out in the buildings, you saw those out there, we do have Plexiglas dividers out there. We have portioned those out initially based on I our understanding about who was coming back at which building and then placed those in those classes that had larger attendance than others. So certainly, we'll do our best to make sure that we get those those dividers allocated where we think that they'll best meet the needs of the students.
So I'll just jump in really quick, two things. One, a few months ago, the CDC came out and said that that the best place for students was in the classroom, and a lot of people hit us up with that that quote. Oftentimes, however, they would leave out the second part of when community spread is under control. And so to me, when I look at the data in front of us, I would categorize this as community spread being under control, which is is why I've supported bringing students back to the classroom. The other thing that I want to address, and we talked about this last time, but I want to make it very clear. People have been reaching out to us, saying we want students to be back five days a week. Several months ago, our board was faced with the dilemma. The administration brought us a model for blended instruction that would have caused students to switch teachers. And in that model, students who are virtual would have all virtual teachers, and students who are in person would have all in person. And the feedback from the community that I think all board members heard was that that piece of transition for kids is unnecessary, that we want our kids to stay with those teachers. So we went to the administration and said, change the model. We don't want a model that requires kids on the whole large part to have to change teachers. So by doing that, Wednesdays are now reserved for individual instruction time, interventions and supports for those students who choose to remain virtual. And again, we've made our commitment to those virtual students. So if this motion passes tonight, and assuming that we're able to be successful and stay open in this model for the rest of the year, in my opinion, this is the last time we're talking about changing our instructional model. We will not look to go to five days a week this year, in my opinion, because of the supports that we chose to provide to our students who wanted to remain virtual. So if we make this, if this motion passes tonight, every student that wants to be in person will have the option to do that four days a week, whether you're 4K through 12. And we'll go forward with that model until we hit the summer and then look to a five day week model next fall. So that's been talked about multiple times. And again, I view that our discussion here tonight around educational model, barring any COVID spikes, that this will be the end of that. All right, if there are no other comments, do we have to vote on Laura's amendment first?
I have one more question, please.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Laura.
I was just wondering about bringing up the partitions. Is it an option to have more of those placed in rooms where they are not currently between the desks or is that like even at the middle schools? Is that an option? Are we able to look into that as well?
Yes, definitely, we are.
Awesome. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
It's been mentioned to me that there are some elementary schools where that that's not in place as well.
That's correct, that in the sense that they've been distributed, and they're in use. In each school, determine where to place the ones that they had available to them. And our original order was based on the cohort model, and so we look to provide enough for those rooms that we anticipated would be at or near that that distancing threshold. And so certainly, if we're looking to move in this direction, that'll spur us to go out and either get more natural or just base resources for our facilities team to continue to convert as they have in the past, or we may have to look for some off the shelf products that we can use in the meantime.
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding and that you're stating that you will be looking to make sure that there are schools that don't have them currently to have them provided.
Yes, we can definitely look into gaining additional ones.
Thank you.
All right, Beth, we're set. We're going to vote on the computer, so on board docs. And we'll vote. I'll let you.
Show my screen really quick, Eric.
Yes, if you could, please. Melissa, did you want to chime in quick?
Just to clarify, we're voting first on the amendment. Whether, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Can it be read?
Yeah, she's going to share it on her screen.
Okay.
So just to be clear, we're voting on Laura's amendment to add a a trigger for a special board meeting if the burden rate hits 400.
Can you see that?
Yes. All right. So the first vote is really on just that second part where it says amendment. If the Brown County burden rate reaches 400, utilizing the 14 day model, a special board of education meeting shall be scheduled in accordance with Wisconsin Open Meetings Law requirements to discuss transition to an alternative instructional model. And just to be clear, that doesn't automatically trigger a transition, but it warrants a discussion. So we have a motion and a second for the amendment. Beth, we're ready to vote again just on the amendment.
Online voting has been opened. Is it there now?
It just took a second. I just got it. Laura Leighton, did you get it up? Okay, just checking.
Okay. All votes have been oh, no. Sorry, guys. All votes have been entered and result results are as followed. Banden Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Sitnikow, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren abstain.
All right, and then that takes us to the full motion. And I don't know if you want to share your screen again, so we can just see that first part. All right, so the full motion that the secondary grade level cohort instructional model conclude on April 11th, 2021, and that on April 12th, 2021, the secondary grade levels commence instruction for students who have chosen in-person instruction in the four days per week instructional model with Wednesdays remaining as a virtual instruction day for all students. And then the addition of the amendment. Right, we're all set, Beth.
Okay, all votes have been entered. The motion has carried. Board member votes are as follows. Banden Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Sitnikow, yes. McCoy, no. Leighton and Warren, no.
All right, the board, the motion passes five to two. We have one more action item on the agenda, which is the rescission of two board policies that were put in place as a result of meeting virtually due to COVID. Now that we're meeting back in person, the policies are no longer relevant, and so I'd look for someone to make this motion.
I move that the repeal of suspension of board policies 187 and 188 regarding Board of Education meetings and public participation related to COVID-19 has presented be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Andrew.
Can I just get a little more background on what this what this actually does this? We would have, we would have both methods of public input still?
We would, the board returned to in person, and then at some point here moving forward, we're going to return to the public in person. And until such time, the public would be able to continue their input process that we currently have available to them, where they can either write into you or they can appear via Zoom. And then after we return to fully in person, we would continue to broadcast our meetings, and so they would still be available to the general public without having to appear onsite for it. But we would then have general public comment at the board meeting.
And Steve, we would also allow the Zoom participation because we know that there might still be people uncomfortable being in person to provide that that in-person comment. So for the time being, Andrew, we would continue to allow the Zoom participation, so individuals did not have to come in person.
Okay, so this this passing this motion only adds the in-person ability with provided that COVID protocols are followed. It subtracts nothing. It doesn't trigger automatically subtracting anything. So if if at some point, and I don't see it happening soon, but if whatever point there would have to be another board vote, if we were to stop, if we were to say that there wasn't going to be a remote option for public participation, correct?
Correct. I just also want to point out that we did not, while we have a tentative date that had been proposed to the board of June to allow the public to start to attend in person, we didn't include it in this resolution again, should the numbers spike, and then we'd have to come back to another resolution. So it doesn't need, we don't need a board resolution as to when the public will be returning. That's already been proposed, and there's a tentative date. We'll notify the public when they are able to return to the board meetings in person, but we left it open ended in the resolution, should something happen between now and that June date and the numbers spike again.
So that. So that brings me back to being confused as to what this does then, we're repealing the policy. But not yet starting the in person participation?
Correct, in person, as it stated, the in person. In person of the community would begin at the date that the board announces.
Okay, so. So we're doing this. We're doing this now to like, the purpose of the policy. Is to say that our public, the purpose of the policy suspension. Was that we were gonna take public comment off site when, as the board went off site, right?
Correct.
So why would we? Why would we reinstate the policy now and not? Like, why would, why would those not be coupled, I guess?
There has been a schedule put forth by Superintendent Merly in working with Eric and Brenda. As to transitioning first district level staff back to in person board meetings. And then transitioning the community back to those board meetings. As the rate of vaccines roll out as well as the burden rate continues to be reduced. And that we continue to work through the, how technology is going to assist in these in person meetings.
Yeah, that's all good, but if, I mean. Do we, if this, if this policy suspension was only about the public input. Then why wouldn't we reinstate the policy? To avoid confusion like, like relatively soon before we were going to do that.
Because I think there's been some question in the community about when the public was going to be able to return. And so this. Resolution, since we are rescinding the repeal of policy one eighty eight. The provision indicates that at the time the board permits the public to attend Board of Education meetings. Then in person comment will be allowed at that point. This, this only speaks to in person comments at the point that you then allow the public to be back. On site for the meetings.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So I think, Andrew, is that this is just getting us back to speed of where we are right now. And keeps us, I guess, consistent with what was in place, where we are, how we're here now. How, what we're providing for public comment, right, I mean, is that what I'm, that's what I'm hearing. Just keeps us consistent and gets us back to speed for where we are today. And the ability to. I guess pivot later on. Right?
Correct.
I mean, I, I guess I'll vote for it because I see no. No downside, but is there, I mean, are we gonna hold a? Are we gonna vote at some point to permit the public to attend in person? When the time comes?
I would argue that you don't have to do that, that that's simply a decision that we make as the community spread continues to go down. And we consider that we're able to meet distancing guidelines if they drop six feet to three feet in public spaces like this. We're gonna be a lot easier, it can be a lot easier for us to make it happen. To your point, certainly this policy could have come closer from a nexus standpoint to when we make that transition. At the same time, by passing the policy now, I think what it does is it signals to the community that we're working on getting back to regular board meetings.
It seems like an awfully important decision for the board to just. Have, you know, board leadership alone decide, although again, it's a, it's a. Since it subtracts nothing and, and will just, and it ensures that both modes will stay, I'm not, I'm not too worried about it. I, I guess I would reserve the right that if we're, I think if there's a deep difference of opinion that some feel that it's time. To invite the public back based on, and others don't, then I, you know, we would just need to have a vote at that point, but, okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm happy to hear there's, June has been thrown out, I personally have not heard that yet and was wondering, so. I'm hopeful that that actually will be what will be in play possibly, hopefully.
Yeah, it was shared in an email to the board on when people would start to come back in public.
June is in there, okay, I missed it then. Okay, I missed it.
Yep, no problem, there've been lots of emails.
Yeah.
All right, no other discussion, Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting has been opened. The motion has carried, all board members have voted in favor.
All right, thank you, motion passed seven zero, with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the special board meeting.
So moved, second.
All in favor? I. Opposed? All right, that concludes our special board meeting, we will be shutting down this Zoom feed and going to another Zoom feed for our work session. So there'll just be a brief interruption and then we'll get started with the work session. Thank you, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our March twenty second work session. Like to start the meeting with roll call, Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening, McCoy.
Here.
Sitnikow.
Here.
Layton and Warren.
Here.
Smith. Here. Becker.
Here.
Banden Hubel.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
All right, all seven board members are present, we're also joined at the table tonight by our superintendent, Steve Merly. Along with members of his cabinet, we are also joined by our inner city student council representatives tonight. Brayden Freeburg, the vice president from Southwest, and Emily Kopp, the secretary treasurer from Preble. So thank you Brayden and Emily for joining us. With that said, that will go to the open forum portion of our work session, I believe we have two people who are registered. For calls tonight, and so I'll hand it over to Josh.
Okay, and here comes Beth.
Good evening, Beth, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Thank you very much for calling in tonight, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Sure, thank you, my name is Beth Lane, I live at eighteen forty one Seventh Street in Green Bay. So I originally was calling in to speak, didn't realize I wasn't speaking until after the vote, but now you've made a vote. So I will change what I was going to say a little bit. Because of your decision tonight, I will be pulling my middle schooler back to virtual learning. Feel free to send her an email with your apologies because you've now denied her an in person education. The clearly, the CDC has clearly stated that the seven is, that recommendations for cohorts. Is between fifty and ninety nine over seven days, our burden rate is currently fifty two and rising. The seven day positivity rate is eight percent, which also places us in the orange section of the CDC guidelines. Which also recommends that cohorts is the appropriate educational model for us to be in right now. I really feel like the staff and the students in this district have been treading water for months now, your decision tonight is basically just going to drown them. We are just shy of fifty days left of in person learning or learning at all. Was it worth it for you to continue down this path and how much more damage are we gonna continue to cause to the students and staff of this district? Cohorts was the middle ground, that was the compromise, that is what. Made everyone feel like they got a little bit of something to get them through to the rest of the year. And now that's been removed. And normally this entire year, I have been very supportive of every decision you guys have made, I know it is not easy. This decision was also not easy for you. But I really feel like, Eric, you didn't even listen to Steve's night when he was trying to tell you that, yeah, we can do this. But it's going to be almost impossible, and you just chose to say, yep, sounds like you can do it, let's move on. And that was totally rude and disrespectful, and I really didn't want to say anything negative tonight, I really wanted to say positive things. I wanted to say, good job to all of our teachers and staff who have really struggled to make this year work, good job to our students who have keep. Plugging along every single day, you know, and I still mean all of those things. And I still respect all of you and I appreciate all of the work and the effort that you guys have put in, but when is enough going to be enough? We've gone too far to come to this kind of a conclusion, and I just think that it's really unfortunate. And I really hope that in the future, you guys make an effort to show that you're listening. Because on both sides of this issue, parents have felt like they have not been heard, students have felt like they have not been heard. The staff at the school feel like they have not been heard, regardless of what side they fall on. And I really hope in the future you guys can make an effort to do a better job of that. And I'd also like to say, please put some more Plexiglas in my kids' schools if this is the decision. Because right now, my daughter sits in classrooms all day long with no Plexiglas except for around the teacher. My son sits in a room all day long with no Plexiglas, in a room that is maxed out. And it's just a really unfortunate situation for everyone involved. And I'm very disappointed and sad about the decision that you guys made tonight, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Yep, have a good night.
Good night.
And here's David.
David, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right, thank you very much for calling, if you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes.
Sure, my name's David Wilson. We live in Alway. I just want to, first of all, start out by thanking all of you for your commitment to the district and the community. While I might not agree with, you know, everyone, I definitely can respect and. Understand the decisions made from the boardroom table are challenging. Welcome, welcome to the boardroom, Laura, I hope you're adjusting well and your peers are bringing you up to speed. Secondly, I'll be honest if I didn't. Say how disappointed I am that, you know, the decision that was made earlier today. About returning to. Four days a week, the issues that Steve and his administration outlined. Far outweigh the benefits of returning to four days a week and. You know, there was, there was, you know. Sure, kind, kind people on both sides of the argument, but again, the benefits, I mean, the. Benefits were far less than, than the things that, that did not work in returning back into in person four days a week. It's, it's still gonna be a challenge for distancing to happen at the high school and middle school level, the cleaning still has to happen. Staffing will continue to be an issue when we have in person or virtual. People to teach those classes is gonna be an issue here in Wisconsin and nationwide. And. And the variants like Laura mentioned are going to, it's inevitable that our community, our state. Will be impacted by the variants and yeah, the vaccine is becoming more and more and people are getting the vaccine, which is great. But everyone can't and everyone won't get the vaccine. I'm gonna say that again, everyone can't and everyone won't get the vaccine. And it won't be widely available until May first, but we're expecting our kids to come back into the building. April. But we still won't allow public to be in meetings until June. Very confusing, but again, I'm just a, consider, I'm really disappointed. And I'll, I'll end with, you know, it really takes a lot of courage to. To, to be a school board member and sure, the, the, the decisions that you all make are complex. And you get a lot of emails and phone calls and talk to a lot of people, I'm sure. But. I challenge you to talk to some people outside of your social circle and talk to some people that, you know, you might not agree with. And ask them some questions and consider their perspectives, and not just one or two, but, but more than that. So many that you can't remember, this is, this community is large enough for you to get a wide ranging perspective. And it's challenging decisions that the board makes, but doing the right thing is easy. I'll say that again, doing the right thing is easy. If you're, if you're truly committed to do it, we can't always give people what they want. We can, we can take their, we can listen to them and hear what it is they want, but the job of the school board amongst many. Is for, is to make the best decision on behalf of everybody. And though everybody's not gonna be happy, but. It, it, it's, it's really disappointing to hear the decision that was made this evening about returning to four days a week. With the things that are coming towards us. I definitely think. You know, this, this community deserves better, and that's not a slight towards any individuals. But this community deserves better collectively. In, in terms of decision making. In, in terms of what, what we've done throughout the course of this virus. It's good to take a stand, it's good to, you know. Make decisions based on information that you get when it's accurate, but. You know, just sitting here listening to these meetings, it's been all over the place and I don't know, I'm just. More and more frustrated with, with listening and hearing the direction that this board is driving the district. And then put the administration in a tough decision, in a tough position to have to operationalize. Or make the concept work that the board has decided on with little to no. Regard for doing the right thing, you might think it is, the people that you might talk to, sure.
David, I hate to interrupt, that's, you're at your five minutes if you want to wrap up, no, you're okay.
I know, I appreciate it, Eric, thank you very much, and you all have a good evening.
Thank you very much for calling, David. All right, that takes us to the discussion portion of our agenda, we have two items for discussion. The first is Fund seventy three trust presentation, Steve?
I'll just do a real brief introduction, I'm gonna hand the baton over to Pete Ross, so Fund seventy three is a tool that allows the district. To better meet the fiscal needs of the, long term fiscal needs of the district and be responsible as a steward of the taxpayers' dollar. And, and pleased that the work that Pete's done to bring this presentation forward tonight, so I don't want to steal any more thunder, Pete, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks, Steve, can you all hear me? Hopefully you can. I am going to introduce three individuals who will be doing a presentation for you. With respect to the Fund seventy three trust fund option. That we will be making a recommendation in the future for the board to consider. And that would be Eric Cass from PMA, Todd Kelly from CISA six, and then Josh Barbian from PMA. So gentlemen, if you'd like to go ahead with your presentation and then we'll answer questions at the end, thank you.
Evening, everyone, my name's Todd Kelly with CISA six, and I'm here representing the Wisconsin Opeb Trust. Next slide. So Pete asked me to give some history of the Wisconsin OPEB Trust. Really, the, the trust was formed in 2008, 2009, and really for two reasons. Simplifying the process of establishing a Fund 73 so districts can address their OPEB liabilities, and also to achieve scale, to bring down the costs of the program. Since then, in 2018, we formed a volunteer advisory committee. And the first action, the, the first action of the committee was to address the cost of the program. So then in 2019, we RFP'd all of our, our partners in this, and we're able to achieve a 30% cost savings to all the districts. So that, that's the history of the Wisconsin OPEB Trust. Next slide. Okay, so CISA 6 provides the facilitation of the program, which includes the preparing and sending RFPs, providing membership updates, providing legal agreements and legal updates, providing resolution templates for the board, and providing specialized trust custody and investment management expertise as well as an advisory committee. Next slide. Other benefits of the trust include dual levels of fiduciary protection, professional service providers, dual sets of record keeping and oversight, so your assets are safe. And then we, we implement a best practice approach. There's checks and balances. We're free from conflict of interest, and there's no revenue sharing agreements in this program. So our structure is very transparent. Next slide. Okay, so the advisory committee, I just wanted to point out, the advisory committee is made up of currently Manasha, Kimberly, CISA 6, New London, and Marathon, and we'd be open to having Green Bay join the advisory committee as well. But really, the purpose of the advisory committee is to review vendor performance and inform the participating districts. Next slide. Okay, so these are the current members of the Wisconsin OPEB Trust, and we have assets of approximately $124 million in the program. Next slide. And then just to disclose the fee structure, BMO, which is the trustee and custodian, their fees are listed below, PMA, the investment manager as well, and the CISA 6 facilitation fee. Overall, the program costs 36 basis points, which is a little over a third of 1%. And then our partners are PMA and BMO Harris. So with that, I'll toss it to Josh or Eric.
Thanks, Todd, and thank you, Pete, and thank you to the board for allowing us the opportunity to present to you today. My name is Josh Barbian, and I've been with PMA for over 13 years now. It's going to be 14 come July. And PMA has been a leading provider of financial services to public entities for over 35 years. We work almost exclusively with public funds. And we're currently serving over 3,200 public entities across 14 states. We have just over 160 employees. And the investment advisory team has assets under management of about $13.6 billion as of the end of the year. And we've also provided investment services specific to OPEB trusts for over 15 years now. And just a little bit of history of, of that PMA has with Green Bay schools. I've had the pleasure of working with the district for over 10 years now in a few different capacities. We started providing bond proceeds management services to the district back in 2010. So we assisted in the investment and the arbitrage reporting for the 2010 facilities referendum. And we also managed the proceeds from the 2014 and the most recent 2017 energy efficiency projects and facilities referendums. In addition to this, we also have segregated accounts for the district, providing investment services to the district's operating funds, the Fund 46 Trust. And we also are kind of in the process of setting up multiple different scholarship and estate accounts that the district has, providing segregated bank statements and accounting for all of those accounts, and also different investment solutions. On the next slide, Pete wanted us just to cover kind of a why use a Fund 73 trust account? So in 2006, a change in law allowed for a broader investment options allowed for funds held in trust. And funds held in trust, in this case, we're talking specifically about post-employment healthcare benefits can be invested according to Wisconsin State Statute 88101, which is for trust fund investments in the Uniform Prudent Investor Act. Annual contributions for the post-employment benefits are segregated and accounted for within your Fund 73 trust for increased transparency. And another kind of consideration is that annual deposits to your Fund 73 beyond your pay-as-you-go amount, which is what the district is currently doing, have a positive impact on the district's state aid, categorical aid, and it can even have a positive impact on grants as well. And the last bullet point here is addressing the district. Basically, the district employees' confidence that funds deposited in the trust will be there to pay for their benefits that they're provided. So that segregation of funds from the district's operating to the trust is a nice assurance to employees that, you know, upon retirement, the benefits are going to be there held in the trust in a segregated account. The next visual here shows just there's multiple different investment strategies and models allowed to participants of the trust. The first one here shown is the ultra-conservative income model. This is comprised of 100% fixed income securities, like money market funds, investment-grade bonds. I think we have about 12% of the total assets of the Wisconsin OPEB Trust are currently in the ultra-conservative model. The second one shown is comprised of 70% bonds and about 30% stocks. This one has some exposure to the stock market, and then it's combined with income from a bond portfolio. We've got about 21% of total assets at this time that are currently in that conservative growth strategy. And the third one here is a moderate growth strategy. That one's comprised of 55% bonds and 45% stocks about. There's about 67% of total assets are in the moderate growth. And the balanced growth has very small participation, but it's got 55% stocks and about 45% bonds, more significant exposure to the stock market on this one. And then this one is combined with like a nine-year duration bond portfolio. The investment strategies that are shown here are determined by working with the district and the guidance of PMA, who's the investment advisor to the trust. And this is kind of taking into consideration the nature of the liabilities that are described in your actuarial study and also investment policy. The last slide here, I want to give just kind of an example showing a $2 million OPEB contribution done annually. The district is currently funding post-employment benefits on the pay-as-you-go method. By establishing a segregated OPEB trust, the district can make a additional contribution to the trust that is set aside for the trust for future payment of benefits. And this visual kind of shows the growth of the OPEB trust with a $2 million annual contribution. And it also shows kind of the investment return growth in that cumulative interest income that can go to help offset the retiree benefits that are paid from the trust. And again, by establishing the trust, you're sort of setting aside funds to pay for that future liability instead of just using the, the current year pay-as-you-go method. And that is a kind of a quick summary there.
Yep, thanks, gentlemen. And I guess what I'd like to do is open it up to the floor for any questions that board members might have. The post-employment obligation for the district is approximately $60 million. About half of that tied up in the emeritus program and the other half tied up into insurance benefits for retirees. I would say that for a district this size, 60 million is, is not a lot of money. It is a lot of money, as you all know. But for a district this size, with respect to its post-employment benefit obligations, it's not huge. It's certainly something that could be handled in a pay-as-you-go situation. But setting up the trust and using CISA 6 as kind of that one-stop shop, because we're not, you know, experienced in investment management as school district administrators, we would rely on somebody else to do that for us, provides us with the opportunity to get that expertise advice to the board for those decision-maker, the decisions that they have to make with respect to what type of investment strategies and so on and so forth. But the main reason that you would do this is that you would recognize that there is this post-employment benefit that you've promised employees that are currently working. It's a way to pre-fund that. And then, and in doing so, you're capturing the aid at the time that you're funding money going into the trust. It's a financial tool that should be in the, in the toolbox and the arsenal of the district. And I'm hoping that the board will consider that seriously when it comes time to vote on it next month. Any questions for any of these gentlemen?
Go ahead, Laura.
Pete, if I were going to have a conversation with a taxpayer in our district about this, and, I mean, I, I don't have a, you know, I don't have training or a good understanding of, you know, these sort of matters myself. What would you, what would you say to a taxpayer as to why our district would do this?
I think the number one reason that the district would do this is, is to recognize that it has an obligation to its employees, that it's promised them for the future, and acknowledges that there's a responsibility to fund that. I think that's one of the reasons that the OPEB laws have been put in place in the state of Wisconsin and, of course, other states as well. As you've, you've heard tonight, there are other states that are also, you know, having to do these type of things going forward in the future. I think it's also a very prudent and responsible financial move. Now, having said that, with Green Bay, there's a special nuance as well in that the state would, in a way, participate in this advanced funding and the fact that the money going into the trust fund would be aidable. You would also be able to receive categorical aid reimbursement on it and potential grant reimbursement on any of the funds that you put into the OPEB trust fund. So there's, there's a financial incentive for the board to acknowledge what it needs to acknowledge and that it needs to fund these benefits that it's promised employees.
Yeah, Pete, one other thing I would mention there, too. You talked about kind of the prudence of it. But this generally has a pretty good, you know, a good effect on districts' credit ratings and bond ratings going forward to showing that you're kind of acknowledging the liability, you're establishing a trust, you're segregating the funds. So I, I think that has a, you know, has a potentially good, very good impact on future credit ratings, bond ratings, which can help kind of lower the cost of future borrowings for that. And again, you're kind of asking the taxpayers for this to kind of, you know, help fund the OPEB trust, right? The current liabilities that the district has and not sort of kicking the can down the road, right? You're taking proactive steps to fund those liabilities now as opposed to just kind of, you know, watching that liability grow, you know? If there was not a contribution, it's, it's one thing I think that is showing you're being prudent about those liabilities with that.
Yeah, I agree, Josh. I, I, I do, and I failed to mention that with respect to the credit rating and the bond rating for the district and, and the fact that it would save taxpayers' money down the road. The other thing is the district will eventually, about half of the program is going to fall off with respect to its post-employment benefit obligation, because my understanding is the emeritus program and it was voted by the board to start grandfathering the dissolution of that program. So over time, the emeritus, half of the obligation will go away. The insurance part of it, of course, is remains.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Pete, based on what you're saying, what I'm hearing, it's prudent financial move. The credit rating, the bond rating would be improved. Is there a reason why this isn't in place already? Sounds like a, potentially, it sounds like a positive thing. It doesn't sound like a liability, so.
Yeah, and, and if you look at the member districts, I did put this in place in Seymour when I was superintendent there. I, I think it's an appropriate thing to have in place, and I would have recommended it had I been in the district longer than, you know, 16 months.
Okay, so is, is there any liability? Or what is your opinion on a liability if we do not do this? Just can you explain that?
Well, you would continue to pay as you go, which the district certainly can do. But the, the joy of this type of financial management, and I do get joy out of this kind of stuff, I'm sorry. It's just kind of a weird thing. You, you know, eventually, I'd like to set the path, set the district on the path where this stuff is all paid for. And you don't have to use general fund money to take away from educating children to pay for the promises that you've made employees. So I think that is, that's a really important feature is that you've got yourself with this program set on a path to take care of that obligation. So in the future, it's not put on the taxpayers for the current employees that you have, that you've paid for it in advance. And I think that's an important feature. And you can make a little money on the side, you know, with the interest earnings and help having, having your investments pay for this future obligation as well.
Yeah, can you speak more to that reimbursement piece of it?
I'm not quite sure what you mean by that question.
The categorical aid.
Sure, yeah. So the district is aidable on any legitimate expenditure. And in Fund 27, for example, part of that reimbursement, it comes from categorical aid. So if there's an expenditure that's a legitimate expenditure made in Fund 27, and of course, acknowledging your OPEB obligation is a legitimate expenditure. Not only will you get equalization aid on the Fund 27 transfer for that expenditure, but you also, for that expenditure, get categorical aid reimbursement. So there's the, the incentive. You have an obligation, but you can, through a trust fund, have the state participate in satisfying that obligation by advanced funding it.
Thank you.
Sorry, Andrew, go ahead. Just this one question. Well, I want to make it absolutely certain that I'm going to support establishing this fund if I have the opportunity to vote on it. It is a, it is a no, it's a no downside situation. It is very disappointing to me that this wasn't offered to us quite some time ago, but it's being offered now by the people who are here now. My only question is, why? Why would a foreign-owned bank with, with BMO? Why, when, when we have choices, we have Wisconsin choices that would be able to handle, should be able to handle a request of this size? Just wondering about that.
I don't know. Eric or Josh or Todd, if you want to speak to that. I know from the perspective of Seymour, when I was a decision-maker and recommending this, this to the board, I, I really was looking for that one-stop-shop, somebody that would be able to handle. I, I really was looking for that one stop shop, somebody that would, uh, be able to handle the fiduciary responsibility and take that from my shoulders because I'm not trained in, in handling these type of investments. CISA six fit the bill because they went from the whole aspect of handling all the legal requirements, the, the trust fund documents to managing the, um, the financial institution as well as the investment advisor. It's their responsibility and their legal responsibility and their fiduciary responsibility to manage all of those pieces, which I didn't want any part of as the superintendent.
And to, to be clear, my question isn't about anything about CISA six or, or PMA. It's strictly with the, uh, organization, why you're, why you have the, the foreign bank for the depository when there's Wisconsin choices or other, you know, US bank choices avail- available?
I'll let CISA six speak to that.
All right. Well, it really comes down to JP Morgan Chase was, was a custodian prior to BMO. BMO has always been the trustee, but during our RFP process, um, BMO came back to us with, with the best fee, fees structure for the, the district. So that's really why we went with BMO.
Okay. Go ahead, Brenda.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, this might be a stupid question, but I'm having trouble. So we, we pay out our, uh, retirement benefits every year, um, to our retirees. Um, we're putting money in this account and it looks like every year it's growing by 2 million. So that 2 million we're putting in is, is going into the, into the bank, is the money that we owe people year by year coming out of that 2 million? Or does it come from somewhere else until we build this up to the point where it's paying for itself?
That's not a stupid question, Brenda. I think that's actually a very good one. Uh, it doesn't have to be 2 million. That was just the example. But, you know, I don't know from, from the PMA point of view or from CISA six point of view, how many people are using any of the funds that they put in to pay, uh, benefits in the current year? Do you have any of that going on?
I can jump in on that. Good evening, everyone. This is Eric Cass from PMA. So there is a, a good mixture. I think that it, it depends because as, when you think about retiree health insurance, you can't predict how many retirees you're going to have that qualify on an annual basis. So districts do two things. They do the pay as you go method. So if you do approve this Fund 73 trust, those funds would flow through Fund 73 into an earlier point, be more transparent to you as a board and the community in terms of what that expenditure is every year. Then the second piece is if there is any strategy that the board would implore or the administration would recommend to fund beyond that pay as you go, that would continue to build and grow with interest every year. But to be clear, there are certainly times where school districts, um, are using balances within Fund 73 that, that they've built up over time to offset an annual expenditure that maybe wasn't planned for. Maybe an example might be when Act 10 happened and there was a flood of retirements due to so much uncertainty. Those obligations for that annual expenditure certainly increased. School district leaned on kind of the savings account within Fund 73 or a portion of it to pay a portion of those benefits that were owed to those increased retirees. So there are certainly strategy that can be used on an annual basis, but I think the approach that most school districts have with these Fund 73 funds is to fund what you can beyond your pay as you go and continue to earn interest. And to Pete's point, there is no magic behind the 2 million. We just wanted to show an example that the power of Fund 73 beyond some of the other outlined items is certainly the ability to gain interest and kind of have a program that is paying for itself on an annual basis. If you get to the level of funding your, or close to your liability.
So, um, so we aren't, we can put whatever we want each year into this fund depending on what our financial situation is. And so in years where we have, we've had this where, um, we've had a certain budget. We haven't spent the entire budget. Um, this would be a place where we could put that unspent money for that year.
Correct. I think you guys have, have done that with Fund 46 a few times in the past where you strategically put funds in there for future capital improvements. It's very similar to that.
Yeah. Or we put it, or we put it in our, um, fund balance also. It's another place where it goes, but, okay. So this is, yeah, cause when I first saw this 2 million a year, 2 million a year, my first thought was, well, we're putting 2 million in, but we still have the cost of paying the retirement benefits. So if, if we're locked into this 2 million a year, this is actually costing us more money every year, but now I get the system now. So thanks.
Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. So I'll be voting yes on this. Um, and if, you know, people who are watching this are wondering uh, how this actually translates into our classroom, into the classrooms, you know, where students are. I, you know, the financial health of our district, it permeates everything that happens in our district. And I, um, I just, you know, I think I'm personally proud of our ability to pay our employees and to offer them enhanced benefits and, um, be a competitive employer and be, and be a good employer. Um, because we, we employ so many people in this district. Um, that it, that affects the economy of our, of our, um, geographical area. So I'll be voting yes on this and I, it just seems like sound and yes prudent decision making. So.
Go ahead, Steve.
So I'll just one, offer one last note here then. If you looked at the districts that are participating and see the WASO is in there. So, uh, when I was in WASO back in the early aughts there, uh, we put this program in place, uh, for the same reason we're recommending that you do it here. Uh, it may not pay enormous dividends for the district as a whole in the next year, two, three, five, 10, 15, 20, 25 years down the line. Uh, this will be, uh, a very wise investment that you will have done on behalf of the community. Uh, every little bit that you put in there that helps the fund grow, uh, provides both an insurance policy for spikes like you described. Uh, for instance, when Act 10 hits or you have a wave of retirements, uh, and then it provides a, an income stream um, that allows you to then use general fund dollars in the classroom. Uh, so as I said, being a, a good steward of the taxpayers' dollars, uh, allows you to make investments now. Uh, maybe small, maybe large, depending on the year that we have in front of us, year over year. Uh, but then in the long term really provides, uh, future boards in the community, uh, much greater flexibility in managing their funds.
Thank you, everybody.
Yep. Thank you very much, Pete, and to our guests. Thank you. Uh, we appreciate it.
And gentlemen, don't feel that you have to stay on for the rest of the board meeting, although you can. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thanks so much.
All right. Uh, we will move that on to our April board meeting for vote. Uh, we have one more discussion item and that is an update on summer school.
So I'll, I hand the baton over here to Lisa in just a moment. Uh, one of the things that we've shared with you is we, uh, prepare for, uh, both this summer and next school year and look at the need that we have to accelerate learning, uh, for our kids. One of the, uh, immediate opportunities uh, for us is summer school. We do have flexibility in terms of funds that are coming to us from both the state and the federal government. Uh, we want to make sure that we use those wisely to best meet the needs of our kids. Uh, to that end, uh, we challenged Lisa and her team, uh, to ramp up, uh, our summer school efforts for our kids this year. Um, to really make sure that, uh, we meet the needs of the community. So you'll hear her talk about, uh, the length of the day and how we'll use that uh, to, uh, meet family needs over the course of the, uh, the summer. Uh, I also want to point out, and I know she'll do a good job of it, but I really would like to point out, um, the exceptional job that she's done balancing the academic needs of our students and also the social emotional needs that you'll see in the enrichment opportunities uh, that this program will afford students to participate. So with that, Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Hey, thank you, Steve. So I appreciate the time tonight to talk to you about summer programming and what we're looking at for this summer. Um, so we first took, took a look really at some of the strategic planning, looking at what is best practice. Given everything that has happened over the last year for our students, we know that summer school is a really key factor for some kids and how do we use it to help support some of the learning loss that has happened over this time? And the research really is suggesting that we're going to need to go beyond a typical summer school program. So for those of us, um, when we were younger, remember typical remediation opportunities or just enrichment opportunities and really finding that balance between everything. And it can be used as one tool to recover that learning loss as Steve talked about. So we, we took a look and said, okay, what are the features of an effective, um, summer learning program? And really there's a couple of different features that really come out. And the first really is around that engagement and really finding that fun and that engagement component. And then also that academic instruction along with the enrichment. And how do you find that right balance between the two? So that we, we kids, it is summer, right? We want to make sure that kids also recognize that it's summer and that it looks a little bit different than the school year. Grounding and learning in a real world context is also an important feature of effective summer learning programs. So how do we bring in those real world opportunities for our kids? Integrate a lot of hands-on learning and we know that for a lot of our kids, they've been missing that. And I think about our kids that really survive in things like automotive classes and those types of things. Um, that is really a key feature that we need to make sure that we include in our summer learning program. And then also making sure that we provide learning opportunities that are linked to the school year learning standards. So how are we linking everything back to what we want our kids to gain and understand during the school year? So the Wells Foundation really has done a lot of research over the years and these are what, some of the things that they find are effective strategies and used in that summer learning. So we took a look then and said, what are our goals and our guiding principles for learning for the summer school year? So our first goal is really to provide rigorous and intentional opportunities for all of our kids in 4K through 12th grade to deepen their understanding of grade level context, skills and strategies. That's one of our key goals here. And then to maximize their resources to provide value added enrichment and social learning opportunities. Cause we know that that are, a lot of our kids are missing some of that social emotional, that enrichment component. And they're looking for those opportunities to socialize with their, with their friends that they've been missing when we were in a virtual, uh, virtual learning environment. Then our guiding principles are really around exploring all our opportunities to, to close those gaps due to the inequities that have happened through the pandemic. Learning environments ensure equal access for all our students. So making sure that we providing something that all our kids can, can access during summer. Lead with, with flexibility. We also know that we're still during, it's still the pandemic. And while we're getting to a better place, we need to make sure that we're flexible in our structure so we can change if need be depending on the pandemic. And then relationships are critical for engagement. We know that from kids. Those relationships are going to be key and engagement in summer learning programs. So those were kind of our goals and our guiding principles as we sat down and really started to look at what will summer school look like for the school year. So we met with our principals and we really talked to them about dates of what do they want for length of summer school? What are they hearing from their students and their families? Um, you will see that we're going to run a summer school between June 14th and August 13th. So for elementary, that'll be two sessions. We'll take the week of, um, July 5th off. It's the same for high school. Middle school, as we worked with the middle school administrators, they chose to go with kind of three sessions, two, three week sessions, and then one, two week session. And they really did that from an engagement standpoint for their kids. As we know, middle school is kind of that age where they're still exploring and they wanted to be able to provide more opportunities around the enrichment component. Um, so they chose to go with a little bit, a week shorter sessions for that as we worked with them, but it'll be the same length of a summer school program. So what is the kind of the overarching things that will, you'll find this year in summer school? So the first is we're going to offer virtual and in-person learning opportunities will be offered. So we will continue to offer, is, um, a virtual opportunities as well this summer. Half and full day options will be available for students in person. Um, times will vary by site in terms of what that will look like in terms of the half and full day, but there will be those opportunities for both half and full day. And we know that that's actually one of those key things is to create more full day programming. When you continue to look at that expanded, what does an expanded summer program look like? Full day opportunities is, is something new for us to explore, but we know it's a best practice out there to continue that growth towards that. Programming will be offered at the majority of our school sites. So if relationships are key, um, and we know that they know our kids, their kids at their school best, how are we encouraging that? And building upon those relationships. So they're making the best decisions for what their kids need. And it'll be a combination of academic and enrichment opportunities. So finding that right balance between the two for our kids so that they can combine those and kids don't have to choose between an academic and enrichment opportunity that they can do both during that day is an important factor that you'll see as we continue to work to design this from all the different areas. We also will make sure that COVID mitigation measures are still in place. Josh, if you want to jump to the next slide. Um, so COVID mitigation measures will be followed. We'll continue to look at those and revises as we continue to improve and are in person longer and we learn more. Obviously we'll continue to work through that. We are recommending in-person programming, five days a week, COVID dependent for summer programming. Um, and we think that, that we're at a point where we can do that. Breakfast and lunch will be provided free to all of our students. And the USDA, um, just extended their current feeding program that we're under here about a week and a half ago. Um, and that will go through September. So we will be able to provide at all of our buildings, breakfast and lunch free for our kids that are in summer programming. And then we're also going to use our CARES funding to supplement state reimbursement for summer school to provide more services for summer learning. One of the things that we are not, in, in a normal year, we have not always been able to do is provide a lot of, um, additional support. And so we're going to use CARES funding to supplement. And so we'll provide things like special education, teachers and parents interventions, the social emotional things, monitors, E L support. This summer we'll be providing all of the support that we would normally see during the school year. Um, and during our summer school program and providing, um, providing those services for our kids this summer. So what does that look like when you get down to the nitty gritty of each of the grade levels? So with elementary, um, each school will run a program either onsite or in collaboration with a partner school to meet their needs for students. So there are some schools with things like construction, those things that are happening that they'll be working together, um, for, for different, for different reasons. But we're going to run at the majority of sites. Morning classes. So the morning part of elementary school will be their academic component piece. And so students will be actively engaged to deepen their understanding and extend their knowledge of grade level literacy and math skills. So the morning are just going to focus a lot on literacy and math through engagements. And they'll be continuing their work with Bridges and Lucy Cockens work, um, in that morning timeframe. And then the afternoon classes will be enrichment opportunities for our kids. So schools will collaborate together in the afternoons to provide more choices for our kids because we know that the enrichment component, it's important for our kids to find something that they kind of gravitate to in those afternoon times. And we want to make sure they have as many choices as possible. So they'll be working together for that afternoon programming, um, to support as many enrichment opportunities as that we can provide for them. So you'll see next that there's a sample schedule and this is just a draft schedule. Obviously things like recess and all those things will be built in, but we just kind of laid out some of the major components that you would see. So students would arrive, there'll be a three hour morning class, then there'll be a lunch pickup, drop off type timeframe. Um, and then enrichment classes, student pickup. And then for the first time, we're also going to be offering wraparound services to take away those barriers for families for participation for full day. Um, so we'll provide either onsite or offsite with transportation. So we'll provide either onsite or offsite with transportation. And we're working right now with our community partners to finalize what those will look like at our different sites. And so we'll offer that till five o'clock onsite. If it's going to be onsite, it'll be till that 5:00 PM timeframe. So really provide a full day of a different programming. Parents can choose between partial day or half day. That is, that will be their choice as well as the wraparound services. For secondary, I want, the secondary program will be offered at all our secondary schools. So the last couple of years, we've had our middle schools and high schools work together. This year we're going to have each of them run their own program at the secondary level. And the courses at the secondary level will focus on four different areas. So one is continuous progress of their current courses that they had this year. So we know a lot of kids need to finish some things up to finish that, that course to earn that credit or to finish the learning that happened that they may not have gotten through for this school year. So that will be number one, the first component. The second will be credit recovery classes to help students stay on track to graduate. So thinking about how do we, how do we help our kids that are close to graduation or missing some of those credits and getting them on track for that? So we were working on some different components, including working with N E W on some proficiency-based course opportunities for our kids that should be graduating here that might be just short and how do we supporting them to get them over the hurdle? And we did, last summer, we did a great job of that, of getting a lot of kids over that hurdle, and I anticipate we'll do the same this summer. Then new credit courses. We don't want to forget about new credit courses for some kids because summer is not compulsory, meaning they're not required to come. They may not want to come to do a math class potentially, but maybe they'll come to do a new class in an area that they want to and then finish that math maybe next school year. So you can work through those different component pieces. So we'll be offering new credit courses. In the past, always P E, P F L, health, those courses are always very popular for our students in the summer as well as some maybe hands-on courses, other opportunities for new credit classes as well for our kids. And then additionally, the non-credit courses, the enrichment courses, we'll be offering a variety of different enrichment courses at the secondary level for our kids. So lots of different types of courses that we will be providing. All right. So an example secondary schedule is here, kind of what it could potentially look like for the different class hours throughout the day. And you'll notice the, they're kind of spread out throughout the day with different timeframes. Some schools, we gave our secondary schools a lot of flexibility. We asked them to really work with their students and work at their building to design the schedule that makes sense for their kids and meets the needs of the, needs at that school and their students at their school. So they are working to collaboratively to really work through what does that daily schedule look like within that day to support the different classes? Again, breaking apart those hours throughout the day to provide a full day opportunity for kids that can come. The next thing we did is we really started working with our community partners around summer school programming. And we said, we know a lot of our partners provide great learning opportunities in summer. And so we're really, we really reached out to them and said, what, what can you do to help partner with us as a school district? So we put out a RFP or request for purchase to our community organizations with the district in offering enrichment courses. And we focused on the elementary and middle school levels. So they would come in alongside our district teachers to offer courses and enrichment opportunities in our schools and provide more opportunities for our kids during that enrichment timeframe. We'll also be continuing, this year we'll also continue to expand our 21C programs, which is our community learning center programs. We have some additional funding this year to be able to extend those into the summer as well. And then wrapper on opportunities for our families, either on or off campus. So we're working with our partners around that as well to bring them in to support our kids. Then transportation. So we know we can offer great things, but our kids have to be able to get here to get to school in the summer to provide it. So we will, we will be offering hub busing will be provided for elementary and at the middle school. We really took a look and prior to the pandemic last year, Christina actually was a board member at that time that was involved in that group, that committee that worked on it. We took a look at all of the transportation across the district and we looked to say, what were the gaps and what were kind of some of the barriers? And we added in some additional hub spots from what we have used previously. So there'll be some additional in there. This summer you also notice that we're going to run three rounds of transportation. So in the morning there'll be pickup, midday, be pickup and drop-off, and then an end-of-day route that will happen for our families. So they can come for a partial day or a full day, and that opportunity for transportation will be there. And that will be for elementary and middle school students. And then for high school, they will continue to ride the metro bus for free. And we have been doing that now for many years with the, our high school students. We did look through that transportation workforce for summer school. We did look at our gaps within public transportation. So we do know we have a few gap areas in our district where the public transportation doesn't, doesn't run out to. So for instance, out in the Red Smith area or McCullough area in our district, those are two on the east side. We looked at those and we'll be providing contracted bus services in those areas where there are gaps. And we'll do that based upon the schedule at that school to make sense of when those courses start and to make sure that we're providing transportation for those students to get to, to get to school. The registration process. So we're in the process right now of gathering all the information from our schools in terms of their recommendations for courses based upon their kids' needs. We will be starting registration on April 12th. Registration will be done through Infinite Campus Portal by paper or by phone. We know that the portal is hard for some of our parents and they, they struggle with it. So there'll be many other opportunities for them to actually call or send us a paper registration to also register for our summer school. And we'll work in collaboration with our school buildings to get that information out. They are the one closest to our families and our students, and so they, they will be working really hard to get that information out to our families and working to register those kids for summer school programming. So that is kind of in a nutshell, all of what are summer school programming, what we're looking at for this summer. So I'd like to open it up now for questions.
Lisa, before they have questions, could you just share with them what the requirements are to participate in summer school this year? Who, who's eligible?
All our students are eligible to participate in summer school. We have always had an open summer school and it will continue to be all kids 4K through 12 will be able to participate in summer school.
And that includes both our students and anyone who's a resident of our district, correct?
Correct. Anyone that's a resident in our district, so private school students, and we actually get quite a few private school students that do register for our district summer school programming. Outside the district, students can also participate for a small fee. It's $50 per course.
Thank you.
Lisa, I'm going to jump in first, two questions. One, I saw that you had done a news story and I saw a link out there about kind of an initial interest survey. Do you have any early results on that in terms of, do we see an uptick in interest from normal years?
You know, so that's a great question and I, and I did pull that data right before I came in terms of what we have currently right now for respondents. We are seeing some increase right now. We are seeing about, about 30% of our respondents are saying they're not interested in sending their, their kids to summer school. The rest are saying they want to. And for instance, at the elementary level, almost 50% are saying they want full day opportunities versus partial day. And if they would send their kids for partial day, the academics in the morning was the component that they wanted. Secondary kids, what we're hearing from them in general is more, they want the half-day opportunities and mornings are what they really want. We even asked high schools about evening programming and right now that is very low in terms of the requests and feelings out there for evening programming for high school.
Great, thank you. You may be getting an update on, on all of this new work and just the interest in summer school. Love to, to continue to hear more about that. My last question, and this might be better for Lynette at another time, but you talked about food service and free breakfast and lunch. Will that just be available for students who are enrolled in summer school? Because I know now we're, you know, the virtual students and the in-person students, you know, anybody who walks up can, can get a meal. Will that change for this summer?
Sorry, I saw Pete just jump in. I'll let him answer that one.
Yeah, thanks, Lisa. We, we, along with many other schools across the country, have been given the opportunity to continue serving free meals to children all the way through September 30th. So that will include the entire summer school program.
So, but if a student didn't enroll in summer school, would they still be able to get a meal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Don.
I see we're going to be offering virtual and in-person opportunities. What will the virtual options look like?
So the virtual options will focus a lot on the academic courses and then some enrichment courses that lend themselves to being also offered virtual and in-person. For what we're looking at for is trying to move away from the concurrent model if possible, especially at the elementary level for those opportunities. Cause we know that what we're hearing from families as well as our staff is that model is very difficult to teach in. So we'll continue that work as we move forward and look through that, but we are looking at that. So moving back to kind of a separate on virtual program component.
Are we expecting any staffing issues? This has to require a lot of people.
That's a really good question. So going out first thing tomorrow morning is actually a survey to all of our district staff. So everyone from monitors to clerical, everyone to get feedback from them, are they interested in working summer school? And we're having informational meetings this week for all of our district staff to, so that they can learn more about the program, et cetera, for summer to make wise decisions on that. But I do anticipate that that could be something that we're going to have to work through for the summer, but we'll know more after that survey closes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Laura.
Hi, thank you for the update. I have a couple of questions. One, you mentioned the half-day enrichment. Would that be an option for some families that maybe they, they weren't struggling academically, but they just wanted to do that enrichment portion?
Yep. So we'll provide the transportation so they can come just for the afternoon portion if they choose to.
Okay. And then you mentioned that private school kids were also eligible to attend. Do you anticipate, you know, a challenge with getting, meeting the needs of everyone that wants to attend? Or is there like a, is there some sort of procedure for determining if, if everybody can't attend due to space limitations?
I don't, Laura, I don't think space will be the issue. I think it will be staffing that may be the issue.
Okay.
I'm going, we're going to hold tight and hopeful and work through that component piece and we'll get, we'll deal with that as it comes up and figure that out. But let's get that information from our teachers first to see and then judge those numbers.
And one last thing is you mentioned that the schools would mostly be at their individual schools, but some would be partnered with other schools. And that kind of piques my interest just based on my own experience with my children. Is that going to be shared before parents sign up for the schools that that is going to affect? And how will they, how will schools be able to accommodate a whole additional school within their building?
Yeah. So they, they will, will work through that component piece in terms of when we look at those initial enrollment numbers, percentage of kids enrolled, and that's part of why we wanted to know that information. What can we anticipate of foreign enrollments based upon some dipstick out to our public? So we could make those judgments and determinations within that. But we'll look geographically as we have in the past with summer school programs so that it's also geographic if we are linking schools together.
Okay. And parents will be made aware before they make the decision of if they're going to select going or not. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Lisa, can you just touch on what, when you say dipsticks, so people understand that maybe you're watching what that pertains to?
So it pertains to the survey of, for parent interest in sending the kids to summer school survey that we put out there to try to get, to get some feedback from our parents.
Thank you.
All right, Laura.
Lisa, I know it's a separate program, so I don't know if you can speak to this, but do you know if this is going to affect Head Start at all?
Great question. I actually just had a meeting today and Head Start will be offering a program the second four weeks of summer school for the little ones at their two Head Start buildings. They'll be offering a partial day program. At this point, we're looking at what that afternoon could look like, but we know that we'll be offering something that, that second half.
Thank you.
All right. Any last questions for Lisa? Well, Lisa, on behalf of the board, thank you very much for all the work that you're putting into this. Summer school has always been important. This year certainly is taking that to a new level. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out. Thanks.
All right. And that is our last discussion item. So with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Before we do that, is this, is this also the general COVID topic or?
No, this was just specifically about summer school.
Okay, so the, the general COVID topic that we had a verbal agreement.
Yeah, that's on the. I think it could be, Eric.
It, it could be?
Yeah. If you look at item B on discussion, it says number one is summer school, but that we left that open. So if there was a, other topics that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was just reserved for regular board meetings, not the work sessions as well. So if you have a, I, I, I thought, I thought you said every.
Yep.
Okay.
Just wanted to check, and this, this could be an email back to me, but I've, I've heard some mixed things about there being a, you know, universal, easy and key point here, well-known ability for kids to get water, fill up water bottles. It's, you know, we heard that there were some water bottles, you know, donated generously. That's good. I still come back to thinking about, you know, I know, I know of buildings where, you know, newer buildings where every fountain has the filling station. I know buildings that don't. So it was mentioned last time, do we, you know, all faucets are the same water, even if it seems kind of weird. Great. But I was in a, in this very building, there's a, you know, hand washing only sign above the, the water. Now presumably adults would have an easier time finding it, no big deal. I just want to make sure that that's there because I've heard some mixed things about it being availability. Just because, you know, the superintendent and board table says we want it to be available doesn't mean that message always filters through. But I can take the answer in email.
I'll run that down and get something out to you right away.
All right. Look for a motion to adjourn.
Some, second.
Moved by Brenda, seconded by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that concludes our march work session. Thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.